Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty, two P M. And we, you know what, I mean, it's pleasant, we're meeting in the small conference room because they're getting ready for a town election tomorrow.
Is this the meeting for the leary lot?
It is.
Oh, okay.
Come on in, have a seat.
Thank you.
And we have a guest, and you are?
Linda Gosensky.
Linda, okay.
And I own the ten Elm and twelve Elm Street.
Okay, all right, we just started the meeting, so if you'd like to have this meeting, we'll go through everything we need to go through, and then we'll, okay. So this meeting will be held in hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation. Please note, while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting here will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans to be or in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The meeting will be held in person in the main meeting room of Deerfield Municipal Offices in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A. Anyone intending to report the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide their name and address for the record. And I hope we don't work and stop reading this soon.
So unlike that.
Let me know, it's so much fun, all right. Let's see, guidelines for business meeting, please speak one at a time, follow Deerfield Code of Conduct, be respectful, considerate, courteous, concise, and recognized by the Chair. And, let's see, all right, identify board members, Satu.
Satu Zoller here.
Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba here.
Kathy Sylvester.
She's here, okay, Andrea Leifson.
Andrea Leifson here.
Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine here.
Denise Mason here. All right, and review the minutes of February fifth, has everyone had a chance, and if so, are there any corrections, additions to the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes as submitted.
I second, Rachel, that's add Andrea.
Yeah.
All right, okay, and if there's no other, I would, like, I guess we can't do a show of hands, okay, Satu Zoller.
Satu Zoller, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Witroba.
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Leifson.
Andrea Leifson, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Blaine, yes.
Denise Mason, yes, minutes accepted, great. All right, our next is the amendment for the leary lot, and notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Monday, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six thirty P M on an application filed by the town of Deerfield for a site plan review amendment for property located at fifty-nine North Main Street, map one sixty-eight, law one twenty-eight, for the addition of an underground cistern irrigation system to the parking lot and other improvements behind the main storefronts at the corner of North Main and Elm Street pursuant to zoning bylaws, Chapter one seventy-nine, one fifty-five, application documents available for review and for municipal offices were online at W W W deerfield dot M A dot U S and calendar event. All right, and, I'm sorry, we have Linda.
Yeah, the Gosensky, you know something, I think it's for just the cistern and everything, I don't think I need to be here.
What do you think, you have?
I, I don't know how to build one.
Oh, I don't either.
Oh, okay, and I don't think it'll impact
your property.
My property, exactly.
Right.
So.
Are you on this side of the line?
I'm on the right hand, oh, wait, you say this side.
Say what their addresses again.
I'm ten and twelve Elm Street.
Ten and twelve Elm Street, okay.
So it does a button.
Yeah.
And at the very end, and there were concerns that I had, but it sounds like this is or something else.
Right, wait, okay, so do you, so what were your concerns about the leary lot?
The, the, well, you know, the, the planning and et cetera, well, I just wanted to, to know exactly how it would look if it's directly related to this and that with my law.
Okay, well, you know what? Just to let you know, you're not actually.
The leary lot people.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, okay, so I, I have, I have it on read this for, for you and for everyone. I did get an update from Christopher Nolan, who's our assistant town administrator. Said, thank you for all your patience, our team works on finishing touches on the final leary lot design at this time. With consultation from our architect at Berkshire Design Group and our consultants at Rivermore Energy, we do not believe we are adequately prepared to have the current iteration approved by the Planning Board for construction due to the addition of the grant-funded Level Three fast charging E V stations. Electrical infrastructure will likely need to be slightly expanded, which will require consultation with our electrical contractor and a larger transformer pad in the top middle section of the lot than the one currently shown. We also continue to wait guidance and formal grant agreement from the Federal Highway Administration, which could result in further minor adjustments. And I anticipate we will be in much better shape by the April first Planning Board meeting to be certain that our final design is construction-ready and not subject to further tweaking. I'm happy to discuss with any of you individually if you have outstanding questions or concerns on the matter, so if you do.
I did, yeah, talk to Chris.
Yeah, you can get in touch with Christopher Nolan, our assistant town administrator, he's wonderful. And we're, we're just pretty excited about this because he worked really hard on this, and we got additional funding to put in these other E V chargers, so.
And they are, they're on the other side of the.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's gonna be a great parking lot, it's gonna be really beautiful, have E V chargers.
I, I have to tell you that some of my tenants are very concerned about it, because what's nice, they have really made it their home.
Made it very.
And their, their little property and all that, and their.
Well, they can come to the next public meeting, we did have a, a previous public meeting, and we did send out invitations to the butters. And I think they have gone around and spoken with them, and to my knowledge, I think everyone was pretty happy. So, but if there are any issues, then we can surely discuss them at the next meeting. But you didn't have to travel that far, so.
Wait a minute, I didn't have to travel that far?
No, you didn't have to travel that far to get here tonight, so.
Well, you're not, you're not residents there.
No, I am not.
She has renters, and I think that, and I think that, and I would think that, right, so she has butters.
I live in, I live in Lefford.
Oh, that's Lefford, it's not far.
So, but I think that you're a part, that you have renters, but that's the thing, she's notified, not those renters, so that's, she's needs to.
Oh, okay, okay. We're so bad, you know.
You want to alert them to our meeting next time, just to, as townspeople, residents, and now they're certainly available to.
And I'll, I'll talk to them.
Thanks for that. Off, off of you, which is saying, you know, if your concerns, they have.
Read that letter, and, you know, hey, this is the meeting, and et cetera, so.
Okay, good, it is, right, I mean, it is, you are, you're, you're.
Right.
It does, it does, so I, I really have to pay close attention.
Yes, you do, yes, I do.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, Kathy?
So, this is Kathy Witroba, I just have a quick question, how many tenants are there in that area?
Uh, well, some have two people, there's, uh, four apartments in the back building, and there are five apartments plus two commercial in the front building, so it could be you know, two, four, six, I mean, depending.
Or residential, residential.
Yeah, you know. So, I, I would say at least twelve above.
Yeah.
You know, it could be fifteen, I don't. So, okay, so, so there's quite a few.
Yeah, that was my question, yes, thank you.
And they're all concerned, and they use all the amenities of the town, which is good for the town. And when you have tenants that like where they're living, it's better for the town and it's better for me.
Yeah, Linda, although they didn't receive the letter, you did, I mean, you can, you can let them know that, and I, you know, if I recall correctly from our last the first meeting, I think people did go around and talk into some of the tenants. So, but if you could let them know, then you're welcome to come to, it's April, April first.
April first.
Yeah, I think that's.
Make sure this isn't a joke.
Not a joke, no. Oh, so, what is the, what are, is the Planning Board supposed to be doing about this tonight, since they're?
We're not doing anything, we just closed the meeting, so we want to continue it so.
I just came through a long meeting, that's all.
Well, in a way, right, well, we just opened the, but then turns out, what I think to, to review, so we're just going to continue, and I move that we continue.
That's great, yeah.
And I just want to make another comment, too, is that every time I've been here, people have been so kind and generous.
As they should be.
But not, not all towns are like that. Exactly, so I appreciate it, I guess, I really do.
Well, it's nice meeting you.
It's nice meeting you.
April first, yeah.
This is not a joke.
It's not a joke. Okay, take care, bye-bye.
Bye.
Is that her purse or yours, Denise?
I believe it's April first.
Is that your purse?
Oh, my purse, yeah, oh, yeah, thank you.
I was make sure it wasn't hers, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay. First, first, all sounds the same, okay. Yes, so, so on that note, do I hear a motion to continue, I move that we continue this public hearing, public hearing, so April first.
Sorry, who just made that move?
Rachel and Andrea seconding.
All right, and all in favor, Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Satu Zoller?
Satu Zoller, yes.
Andrea Leifson?
Andrea Leifson, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Denise Mason, yes, okay, so that will be continued to April, you can just double check, I'm pretty sure it's April first. So, so, just for the record, it says. Yes, it is, it, it will be continued to April first, all right. Okay, so the next, the next A N R is fifty-nine Matthews Road. Want somebody here for it?
So why does it say, what, what is fifty-nine North Main, that's the leary lot, that's the same?
Yeah.
Why does, so there's an A N R on that as well?
I can explain that. Yeah, so when they did the original A N R, Hamshaw is going to, and you'll be getting a site plan review in the next few months, Hamshaw is expanding their building. And the way they want to build it, nobody realized that it, it's one of these weird, the site and all the various rules regarding the lot, that they couldn't build it the way they wanted to, because, you know, one corner was just a hair too close to the line. So what they were doing, if you look at the A N R, is we're swapping an equal-sized piece on one end for an equal-sized piece on the other, it's a north and south, you'll see at the, at the top and the bottom. It's just a little triangle, and by making that swap of exactly an equal amount of land, I think it's three hundred and eleven square feet, that allows Hamshaw to build the way they want to build. And so it's, uh, we actually did a swap a lot like this, my, my aunt's place on the vineyard, we just changed the line a little bit, so our neighbor could have something that she wanted. It's, it's, Bob's looked at this, he's okayed it. It should be a very.
I think, they, they talked about this, this has been ongoing, this is.
Right, so, does it require any action by us?
Uh, no, I think, I think Bob's, Bob has no issues with that, I mean, I don't need to endorse it, excuse me?
Don't we need to endorse it?
Well, I think we'll need to endorse it, but, I mean, I know, this is confusing, endorse it, but we're continuing the public hearing.
It's separate, so I think, yeah, and I think we just endorse it, it would be nice if Bob were here to tell us that, but it's such a straightforward.
Right, okay.
And otherwise, I think, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but it'll just happen if we don't do it. It, it happens automatically.
Yeah, if you leave it long enough, I mean, well, you guys have to sign it, actually, well, I think you have to sign it to get it recorded, I'm not, I'd have to look up the exact rules on A N Rs. But if you guys can sign it, that makes life a lot easier, and it will make the town happy, and it will make Hamshaw happy, and there's no reason not to sign it, because it doesn't need approval.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, that we endorse the A N R for the leary lot for the land swap that is proposed by, and I think it's actually that the town, isn't the town the?
Yes.
Making, there's the, they're.
Yes, the town is the proponent, and, and I guess to be official, we should call it fifty-nine North Main Street.
Fifty-nine North Main Street, so I, I I move that we endorse the A N R for fifty-nine North Main Street, just proposed by the town of Deerfield.
All right.
And this is Andrea, I second.
All right, everybody, let's see, Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Satu Zoller?
Satu Zoller, yes.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Andrea Leifson?
Andrea Leifson, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Denise Mason, yes. I have, yes, okay, okay, all right, thank you, Rachel, I know, yeah.
So this, this needs to be signed, then?
Yeah.
Kathy can swing by and sign.
Yeah, there's a Mylar in there, the two of them are labeled with pink labels at the end, so you just need to sign them, and I think someone will have to come in, because we need four signatures.
Yes, and, okay, so, so we're all set with that, we'll, so we'll sign that, and that, I think what was confusing is that we have that, and then we have the leary lot, so.
So, but the public hearing is still open.
Yes, that's correct, well, the public hearing is still open until April first, okay, so the next, the next A N R we have is for Matthews Road, and Amy, I thought that someone was going to be here, once again, I think this is something that Bob said there weren't any issues with, they are just dividing two lots, although we, you know, as it says on the application, we have no idea, we can't say that it's a building lot, that's up to Bob Walden, so.
And one concern I have is that this, they'll. That this was Andrea saying, the septic is on the lot, it's going to be.
A little, a little background on this, this was actually approved by the Planning Board several years ago, they never took it to be recorded, and now they've decided, they, I think they want their kids to live on the, the second lot. And so they're basically, they have to repeat the whole thing, because they've lost the Mylar, and it's outdated, and so they're just really doing it again, Bob had absolutely no concerns with it.
Yeah, that, that sounds good, as a matter of fact, I think these were the individuals that own Savage's Market, that is now Bittersweet Cafe, and I believe they've moved out of state. Right, yeah, okay, okay, so that is, there are no issues with that. So, do I hear?
I move that we endorse the A N R at, what number is it, fifty-nine, again, Matthew's Road. For the application presented to us.
I'm going to second Kathy Sylvester.
Okay, all in favor, Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Satu Zoller?
Satu Zoller, yes.
Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Andrea Leifson?
Andrea Leifson, yes.
Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Denise Mason, yes, all right, so we will sign this, and who did you say Kathy Witroba will come in and be the first signature?
Thanks.
Because we just need four signatures, so if anybody else wants to travel, feel free, but.
You can come in the morning if you.
I'm swinging down.
It's fine.
I'll mask up.
And Amy, we'll just leave it here, is that?
Yeah, that's.
When you come to vote, you don't have to do it tonight, come tomorrow, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I give, yeah, okay.
No, 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 no need, it's not a right.
A lot of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I'm just coming, I just.
Yeah, so you can just, if you guys can sign that while you're there, and you can leave everything there, I'll come in in the morning and clean up.
Sure, that sounds good. Okay, wow, this is a very short meeting, see.
And productive.
Yes, very productive, okay, so one thing that we do have, I can't think of any old, any old business, as a matter of fact, I spoke with Amy today, and I was just asking questions, I think we talked about this last time, that oftentimes, we, we, you know, people come to the Planning Board, we okay it, and we never hear anything back. So I spoke with Amy, and she's looking into the solar array on her landfill to see what's what with that, and she's also you did get in touch with, I think, the attorney for Vesch, haven't heard back, so she's getting back to John Furman. And I did have the question about that, because when we were there and we did a site visit, we noticed that the detention pond, their first detention pond is weeded over, it's a mess, and so Amy's going to look into, I, I don't think, Amy, did you say there's no electronic file on that, which I thought odd? Going to look into that?
Yeah, so, yeah, I am, let's see, so I did email John Furman, I heard back from him, he said he thought they were actually getting close to getting started on that, so we will, you know, begin, actually, I guess he said they had asked V H B for a, an estimate to be the construction manager, which kind of tells us that, yeah, it looks like they're, they're going to get started. And I know, you know, we did already give them the decision on this, I was not able to find their original decision to see if it said anything about the maintenance of the detention pond, I, I'm going to have to dig through some files to find that. What I didn't do and should have was check the decision that we made back last year to see what the conditions on that were like, I don't think, I think we did talk about the detention pond.
There weren't any conditions on that, for that, I, I think what, what made us really think about it was Cumbe's and wanting, them wanting to put in E V chargers, and us realizing that the detention pond was a mess, and so and we looked back, and I think you realized that we hadn't gotten reports from them in close to two years, and we should have gotten them. So we're holding their feet to the fire, so, you know, I think we need to hold Vesch's feet to the fire as well, so.
Moving into another phase.
I agree.
So, so Amy, at some point, I mean, if in your searching, I hope that you're able to find that, or, you know, let me know, I'll, I'll be in tomorrow, maybe we can talk about.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so, so that's what else, I think, was anything else going on, Sunday, it seems like they're moving.
They're out there with their axes?
Yeah, and.
Yeah, now they have a backhoe?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good, I know, I didn't.
Would you want to talk about appointing somebody to the C P C from the Planning Board?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think there, I think that Satu was interested in doing that. So would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Satu to the C P C?
I do, that Satu be appointed to the C P C, do I hear a second?
Second, Andrea.
Rachel and Andrea, it's Rachel and Andrea, so I know.
Yes.
So Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Satu Zoller?
I didn't even get to campaign for this position. But I will, okay.
When you're like running against the person who's sitting next to you.
So, yes, I'll vote for myself, yes.
Kathy, Kathy Witroba?
Yep, Kathy Witroba, yes.
You said, yep, Rachel Blaine, yep, Andrea Leifson, yes, Denise Mason, yes, so congratulations, Satu. The C P C, you're excellent. Kathy Sylvester has been appointed to the C P C by the Select Board.
Oh, so you're going to stay on?
Yes.
Oh, brilliant, yes, on the C P C.
Yeah.
Who's chair of that board now?
I am. I know, it's a joke, but nobody else wanted it, and it's like.
A joke.
You know.
That is awesome, Kathy, that is excellent, that is a very important board, I think it's a very important board.
And congratulations on that, Kathy.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, well, it was either me or Lili, I couldn't do that to her, she doesn't. So, anyway, Satu, though, you know, you could be this vice chair, you know.
I'd be happy to be vice chair.
Oh, wonderful, I'm going to talk about that next time we meet.
All right.
But I'll wait till you're there, I know you.
Yeah, this week, like I said, unfortunately, I can't make it, but after that.
Yeah, we have one on the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, it's busy in March and April, but then it gets much quieter.
Amherst, Amherstum, C P C is putting, taking out a parking lot. It's kind of a big thing, like, hardly built by the.
They're taking it out?
You know, where the Mary Apple.
No, I know where it is, it's gone. No, it runs.
Parking's gone.
Oh, I assume they were, they're, they're, they're removing, they're removing parking spaces in Amherst.
Oh, that's brilliant, wow. It's amazing, and it's a big, like, sign, like, you know, your C P C dollars at work, I'm like, what? Why, they're not my C P C dollars.
I think, I think we're a little more thoughtful about our C P C dollars, so.
Well, we're trying. We're going to have a public comment, March twenty-seventh, and you're encouraged to come, because, you know, we need to know how people, there's a huge, as you probably know, Denise.
Yeah.
Budget request for the eighty-eight building, which is going to take a lot of the money that we have, and it is, it is in the towns, the town wanted to save this building, and so this is the way to do it, but.
Well, we'll save that conversation for that, and hopefully we'll have all accurate information for people by then.
Well, they put in a pretty excellent.
Have been the senior center.
Have been senior center.
And then related one in the school, and, yeah.
All right, great, all right, so if we move on to other business, and I know this is looking farther ahead, but I think, I think Cassie realized that, we had a meeting tonight, and they had to set up, so she was looking ahead to November, and November fourth is the election, so we can't meet you know, the previous day, and then we can't meet the next week, because November eleventh is Veterans Day. So, we have to decide when we want to meet, and we can either choose another day of the week, which might get confusing.
Or move it a week into October, two, two in October, and.
Could do that, once you're in November, because honestly, then you start. Yeah, I know, it gets.
Bump into, I mean, yeah, and usually, I thought it was against the rules to have a meeting
It is.
The night before, not just for the space, but like, who knows?
Oh, really?
We're violating the rules right now.
Oh, really?
That's my sense, but anyway, but let's not tell anybody, it's on, now it's on tape.
Oh, good job.
Thank you.
So maybe the twenty-eighth of October?
That's what I was, I mean, because if we can't do it, yay.
I think that's fine.
I mean, aside the eleventh.
Well, that's, okay.
And then the eighteenth, I mean, do the eighteenth, but then, the eighteenth puts us back close to.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, I, I, I like the twenty-eighth, because the first meeting in October will be October seventh. And then we've got three weeks, so this for, okay, so Amy, did you get that?
Yep, ten twenty-eight for the November meeting.
Yes. Okay, that sounds good. All right, good, prepare that. All right, any other business not reasonably anticipated? Anybody have any business? See what else, any reports from any committees?
Do you want to do public comments first, because we do have a.
Well, Mr. Franceski, do you have any comments, I mean, we, there's no, there's no, the public hearing is continued. So, there's really not much to comment on.
Nope, just listening in.
All right.
I came for the public hearing and the discussion of the leary lot, but I guess that's not happening, so.
No, it's, it's being continued to April first.
Can I just mention that one, the reason why I wanted to come for that, and I just wanted to mention it to all of you, so that it's at least on people's radar, is that in the plan, at least the one that I saw, it has the bicycle parking lot in the middle of the leary lot, as opposed to where the bike lane is going to be approaching the leary lot, so it's forcing cyclists to go through the lot, which is endangering people on bicycles, whether they're walking or riding their bikes, they shouldn't be mixed with the cars, they should be at one end of the lot or the other, so they can, you know, have a clean access to their own parking.
Well, just remember April first, and you can certainly voice your concerns, if that being.
Will do.
Thank you.
Also, it turns out, too, that some of the concern, some of the reason we're not looking at it tonight is because there's still some, some engineering, or they're still looking at plans, so that might be worth dropping a note to Chris. some engineering or they're still looking at plans. So that might be worth dropping a note to, um, Chris.
Yeah, I was thinking, I, yeah, I can do that, uh, tomorrow. I, I'm putting that in my notes here.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
That's a good point.
Okay, so Andrew, do you have any?
Um, the Open Space and Recreation Committee has spent a lot of time figuring out how to, uh, permanently protect four pieces of, four parcels of land that the town already owns. It has become a very, very complicated, um, process and we believe we now have a way of doing it. It is not the first way we thought of. It is not the second way we thought of. I think it may be the fourth or fifth way we thought of it. Turns out, we learned that we cannot apply for CPA funds because the land was not purchased with CPA funds. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's that and, uh, the Franklin Land Trust, um, turns out does not want to hold a conservation restriction because people are using the land already. It's very difficult to control them. And, um, so we're going to do this in a way that doesn't involve a conservation restriction. So when I have the exact, um, way we're going to do it, I promise I will share it with you all.
People are using the land for what?
Biking. They're, it's already traffic. It's already traffic.
Recreationally.
Yes.
Which is part of the reason you want to hold it for perpetuity.
But they can't be involved in that because they feel like it's already.
Well, because they, you would have to, they would say, this is the way the land is now. This is the way we'd like to maintain it. And people are putting in jumps and using.
So biking changes the.
Yes, yes, yes. So, so that's, uh, so that's part of the reason. And then the other reason is we discovered we can't use CPA funds. So, uh, we figured out another way, um, well, the Open Space Committee will be meeting with the Conservation, um, Commission to, um, figure out this other way.
So the, the, the goal is to hold the land outside of any kind of possible purchase or change of use.
Correct, yes, right, but it's not permanently protected.
Exactly.
So we're, we are, um.
Protecting it permanently.
For potential sale or change of use.
Correct. Great, good.
Yeah, and that has taken about six months to figure all of this out, maybe even longer. Um, but it's.
At least it's getting figured out.
It is, which is, which is for which we are, yeah.
That's really, it's really important.
Yes, the select board didn't know about this. The planning board didn't, I don't believe.
Is there any like whole old growth thing going on there too?
No, no.
And that's the beauty of actually having conversations with us, with everyone.
Yes, exactly.
No, that's great. Um, Kathy, do you have anything to?
Yeah, the CPC had, uh, three applications, two historical, one, uh, for the eighteen eighty building, which you're somewhat familiar with probably. And the other one is to restore, uh, painting that, um, was in the Saint James Church at one time. It's still actually there. Um, but not owned by the church. Uh, it's owned by Chris Harris. And they want to restore the painting. It was done by a famous painter. So, and then they, we have one, um, recreational application for the Trittown Beach to build a dock. So, and we also found out that our state matching funds next year are going to be substantially reduced. Um, probably because there's not a lot of people buying homes and we're funded by the Registry of Beads. You know, the, the money weight when you have to file a deed. So, um, that was disappointing. And that's, so anyway, the, the application period is closed and we deliberate on these about recommending them this weekend.
You said you had two historic ones, two historic proposals?
Yes, yeah.
So one is the painting and what's the other one?
Building.
Yeah, so the painting.
Historic, not, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and the paintings are small. It's a phase one. There's, they're going to have other phases and so I'm, I'm in contact with Stuart Saginaw at the state level because there's some concerns about that application being religious in nature, being privately owned. So we'll see what happens with that.
Private ownership, because we, we went down this path with them before.
Yeah, you can't do that. Yeah, I mean, you, you can, but it's really not advised. So. Um, but you, you know, the plan is to donate it, but it hasn't been official. So anyway, that, we have to kind of, I'm, we have to sort through that. Um, and then this, the senior housing. Oh, yeah, and there's, there is the public comment that's on March twenty-seventh for people to come and hear about the different proposals and give their opinions about how they want their taxpayer, tax money spent. Um, just to give us some feedback. And then, um, the senior housing, we really don't have any updates on that right now.
All right, thanks. Eddie, Satu, anything on the library?
Yeah, the building committee is meeting next week to talk about the bids that have come in for subcontractors for building the library. I think they're due this coming Friday. Uh, if they look good, we're going to move forward with a move. Um, actually, the general contractor bids would be opened up then and due March twentieth. And if everything looks good, the moving date I think is around March twenty-first. Uh, but that's subject to just everything going well with the bidding. And then there's, library will be closed completely for two weeks while, um, everything is moved from one space to the next. The temporary space looks really good. I think they've done a great job with the floors and I think the kitchen will be usable and the bathrooms and everything. So I think the library staff's very happy with that space. Uh, and then we're planning also a, a ribbon cutting and who will invite to that. And I think that will be early April. So things are moving and then, you know, within a year from that ribbon cutting, we're hoping that the new library will be built. So.
Hey, Satu, what is the name for the building committee? Because I wasn't at the last one.
Oh, yeah, it's next Tuesday at four thirty. I'll send a reminder, but yeah, next Tuesday.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, I mean, remember, did I read this last time? I mean, and I haven't seen it, but it is incredible. Thank you, Eagle Brook School.
Why'd you do those floors? Like, those floors are the.
They're gorgeous, yeah.
They did the floor. Let me see someplace here.
Well, T A Sullivan also earned a little extra points because they, they work with the town really closely to keep costs down.
They earned some big points. Okay, so I'm going to read what they did. Fellowship Hall received new roof, two new electric circuit breaker panels, complete electrical rewiring, sand and refinished floors, three new bathrooms, one of which is ADA compliant, a new ADA compliant ramp, a new fire detection system and fully repainted ceilings and walls. I mean, that is incredible. And you know, we've got to thank Tim Hilchi because he has been looking into all the appliances for the kitchen and induction stove, new, new hood fan, uh, new refrigerator and what else? Oh, and then, um, doing, um, countertops, quartz counter.
Quartz countertops?
Quartz, yeah. So I can't wait to see it. It's going to be really nice.
So that was all paid for by Eagle Brook?
Not entirely.
No, 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 no. What they've done, no, we have money. Um, the town has money. We had a hundred thousand dollars from Joe Comiford that she, that we got from, well.
She, that wasn't, she earmarked.
That wasn't just for that. No, that wasn't just for that. That was for senior services and she said, yes, you can absolutely use that for that. Plus, I think we had another, I'm not, I'm not sure if this is correct, another three hundred thousand dollars. So we do have money to buy all of, all of the appliances. The only, excuse me, new. So the only, and new floor too. And the only thing that would be left, which is big, is the sanctuary. All those, uh, pews need to be ripped out. They've got lead paint on them. Plus, they're all attached. I mean, it's not like they're standalone. So that will eventually have to go and then, and then possibly probably shore enough of the floor because standards have changed substantially. Now, you can only have so many pounds per square inch, so that'll, that'll change. But eventually, after the library moves out, that will be a senior services and community center. And we'll continue working on.
So the eighteen eighty building won't be seniors?
That won't be seniors. No, that will be the municipals, that'll be here over to there. And I think we're still waiting on a four million dollar federal earmark, um, for that building.
Right.
So when the budget is passed, when it, I've sort of lost track.
Right, that's the budget.
Yes.
It was a big budget.
That's the federal, the federal budget.
That's a, yeah, well then, keep.
I know, I know.
But it was, Eagle Brook did do the, they did the contract. They were the.
Yes, yeah. But, thank you.
Yeah, it was good.
Yes. Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot going on. It's great. And I think it's really important to continue, you know, uh, reporting this at our meetings and other meetings so that people know whoever watches these meetings.
It's exciting.
It is, very exciting.
It's very exciting.
There's a great article my sister sent me about how important, and I always said this, but how important libraries are. They're, they're basic infrastructure and we lose that opportunity. It's said a lot, but then, you know, rubber hits the road, fire, police and roads. Schools.
Yeah, no kidding.
Libraries take a distant fit. So it's just a really important, important not to lose that.
Right, so, oh, just one other thing. I think we're working on, I think, um, Tim Hilchi was talking to Phil, the architect for the library, just to find out for the solar committee, um, what the square footage was so we can get an estimate on putting solar on the library roof. So, yeah, lots of moving parts, but, you know, things are moving ahead. All right. I don't think there is anything else. Here, just. Do I hear?
I move that we adjourn.
I, Kathy Sylvester.
Yeah. I thought it was the Rachel and Andrea.
No, she's, she's.
All in favor, Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Satu Zoller, yes.
Cathy Witruba?
Cathy Witruba, yes.
Andrew Liebson?
Andrew Liebson, yeah. Rachel Blaine, yeah. Denise Mason, yeah. So meeting is adjourned.